I'd like to call the January eighth Board of Education meeting to order and welcome everybody who's in the audience here tonight and hope you'll stay for the entire, maybe an hour meeting, two hour meeting, but if you can stay, we appreciate it. I'm gonna do something a little different for our invocation. I had a meeting, well first of all, has anybody lost a silver wedding band in the ladies' restroom? Seriously? Sexes in ladies' restroom.
Six, six hands went up.
But you may or not, I need to make sure for it.
Where's the red shoes?
I didn't find it, let me clarify.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
My mother found it, my mother found it.
And how many years is that, Mr. Miller?
Yeah.
Let's not start that.
Twenty-nine. Dr. Pruden has been keeping a secret from us for a while since we hired him and it was a great honor. We had a meeting with Senator Raven and Representative Ayler a few weeks ago, myself and Vice Chairman Thorson. And Dr. Pruden gave us a book and in this book is a diary of senatorial prayers, nineteen seventy-five. And all the prayers in this book are prayers that his father prayed in the North Carolina Senate, who was the chaplain of the North Carolina Senate, and he's never told us that. So it's an honor to receive this and I hope that you don't mind, but I'm gonna use one of these prayers tonight.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our Father, we thank thee for the blessings of life that bring us joy and satisfaction, but we thank thee too for the responsibilities which test our character and compel us to seek a source of strength and wisdom which is above and beyond ourselves. In the performance of today's duties, give us courage, wisdom, and the particular confidence which duties require, and to thee shall be honor and praise. Amen. And please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance from North Brunswick High School ROTC. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Come, get me coats. Hold coats. Hauling case. Try coat. Hold on. North Brunswick ROTC. Next on our agenda is our salutes and the first one, Dr. Pruden, I think it's Farm Bureau.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Miller. Mr. Milton Coleman, if you'll please come to the podium while I share this information. All students, let's go down to the wheel.
Yes.
All students in career and technical education programs have an opportunity to develop and extend their learning through participation in active career and technology student organizations. The Organization for Agriculture Students is Future Farmers of America. The FFA was founded by a group of young farmers in nineteen twenty-eight. Their mission was to prepare future generations for the challenges of feeding a growing population. They taught us that agriculture is more than planting and harvesting. It is science, it's a business, and it's an art. For the second year in a row, Brunswick County Farm Bureau is funding the Future Farmers of America Membership Affiliate Program for all Brunswick County Schools' FFA chapters. Because of their generous donation of five thousand, six hundred and twenty-nine dollars, every high school agriculture student in Brunswick County Schools will be a member of the FFA. Future Farmers of America are future biologists, future chemists, future veterinarians, future engineers, and future entrepreneurs of America. With the partnership of Brunswick County Schools and Brunswick County Farm Bureau, we are helping the next generation rise up and develop their own unique talents and explore their interests in a broad range of career pathways. Mr. Coleman, thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you for having us. I just briefly share a comment or two. This opportunity allows students to participate from the local level all the way to national. And I think there may have been three students that went to Indiana back in October for the national event. We're into seed planting business, and that may sound sort of odd to you, but as production folks or production oriented, sometimes each of these three chapters are required to have a community project. Some of you may be familiar with the softball renovation project that occurred at North Brunswick two years ago. When that proposal was made to us, we had a big discussion and obviously the first thought that the board had is what if we get thirteen other schools making a similar request? Our focal group is FFA, so we are limited to three schools in this sense. This became a real interesting partnership in addition, and that's what got us involved in terms of looking at an opportunity here, what may happen whenever a seed germinates. We asked for a proposal, they told us it would take seventy-five hundred dollars to do this project. We said we can help you with at least thirty-five if you'll come back to us, letting us know that you've incorporated additional participants. And before long, in fact at the next meeting, they reported that a couple of commissioners in that area of the county came up with a thousand dollars each and the Board of Education came up with two thousand. And lo and behold, when we started expanding this and they did the project themselves, we started the irrigation, along comes rain bird. And rain bird contributed. When it came time to put the sod down, one of the sod producers in this county contributed. And it developed a real neat little partnership. And there's another one in the making. Most of you, if you haven't had a chance to see our new hospice center, someone gave them a golf cart and they have no place to store. So now they've talked to one of our FFA groups about building a storage unit, and this is the next one we see. And we're again, would like to participate with partnering with you folks and whenever the opportunity presents itself, that we will be there to support through FFA those opportunities. One other I would share with you is that we'll have an opportunity and it could occur in March. There is at the land grant level, a new club been formed that involves overseas study. And it involves basically land grant institutions and it's called the Global Club. North Carolina will be hosting that event this year because we have the national president. And I'm told they want to take this group from Raleigh to the ocean. And along the way, we hope we're going to be able to share what we're doing as it relates to aquaculture. So this may be another opportunity that we can participate in, so we appreciate your recognition.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
While efforts across our country are many to help new teachers find success in the classroom and stay in their positions for a lifetime, it is reported that approximately fifty percent of teachers leave the profession after five years. University of North Carolina Wilmington, with strong regional partnerships including Brunswick County Schools, continues to work toward retention of new teachers in a more global systemic approach through the First Years of Teaching Support Program. As part of the First Years of Teaching Support Program, the Promise of Leadership Group is comprised of new teachers who show leadership and innovation in the classroom. Teachers are nominated by their school system and formally recognized by UNCW for their commitment and expertise with the Promise of Leadership Award. These teachers also have an opportunity to work with a UNCW mentor and provide professional development to other beginning teachers during workshop sessions. We're very proud that Brunswick County has two first-year teachers who are being awarded the First Years of Teaching Excellence Award, Promise of Leadership Award, and they are Kylie Lynn Marshalk of Brunswick County Early College and Heather Walker of Shiloh Middle School. Would you please come forward?
I have one more that's not on the agenda. The Board, Ms. Shirley Babson has been a fixture to this Board for how many years now? A long time. Let's just say a long time. I was in fourth grade, I think, but anyhow, we wanted to do something to thank you for your years of service and your ten years as chairman. So we got you a little gift here that says Shirley Babson. Wow. Oh, look at there. Honoring your ten years of service as chairperson, Brunswick County Board of Education, January eighth, two thousand thirteen. And I, for one, Ms. Shirley, I've been on the Board now almost eight years and, you know, I learned a lot from you and I appreciate your guidance and stability and leadership. So I just want to say that. But this is for you. I know. Okay. Would you, would you do it next time? Yeah, mhm. Okay. All right. Okay, next on the agenda is the public address, which we do not have anyone listed for tonight. And then we'll go into presentations. First on the presentation is Matilda Scott, South African Experience. Welcome.
Good evening, Chair Miller, Vice Chair Thorson, and Superintendent Pruden and Board and Audience. It brings me great pleasure to represent Shiloh Middle School. I am in my fifth year, tenure year at Shiloh Middle School, and I want to share with you today my experience with Watson School, Watson College of Education, UNCW International Teaching Experience. I would like to just start, begin with a snapshot of my experience. If you will turn behind you, there'll be some slideshow photos of my experience and I will give you a little insight on the things that occurred while I was a guest teacher in South Africa. learning about a school system which is quite similar to the American school system as well as quite different. I was able to go in and partner teach and also supervise teach, beginning teachers, part of their experience. So one of the things that I can say that I got from this trip and I was able to bring back and share with my colleague was continuity, teaching students about change over time and global interactions with people around the world. The culture and tolerance that I think that our students need to be aware of happens outside of our four walls. Prior to my going to South Africa, my students, I coached girls soccer at Shiloh Middle School, and my students wanted to do something for the students at Infuweni Primary School, which is a K-8 school. They got together and collected gently used cleats so that they could ship them to South Africa for my visit for a school that does not have an athletic program or a physical education program. So for me, if I can impact my students here in Brunswick County and take them across the world without them even traveling there, I think that was one of my greatest experiences that I inspired them to take on a challenge and to reach outside of the world to understand the needs and the lack of resources that this country may have. So I wanted to share a little bit of my experience with the Board and the audience to let you know that I greatly appreciate your allowing me an educational leave so that I will be able to take advantage of my professional development career while I'm at Shiloh Middle School and representing Brunswick County Schools. So I would like to thank you for that experience and allowing me to bring back everything that I learned as far as the educational system and what I can teach my students here in Brunswick County, or our students. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
What kind of bone is that you're holding?
Elephant bone. The elephant bone was transported from one part of the reserve, became very ill and actually deteriorated in the area that we were touring.
Okay.
And my kids, my students with the, with them assuming a lot of things about Africa, a lot of the pictures that I showed them, they did not know that it was much like the very town that they live in. I was in Port Elizabeth, which is located on the coast, is adjacent from Cape Town. So it was, when I showed them the pictures, they were very astonished about how it's really like their town despite some of the impoverished areas that are still going through some turmoil.
Thank you.
Thank you.
What kinds of questions did the African students ask you about the United States?
They wanted to know what school was like. They had, we set up Gmail accounts, so they wanted to know how did students communicate with each other over the internet. So while we were there, we set up Gmail accounts and they actually began pen paling our students here. So they were really excited about the internet connection because they knew about Gmail accounts, but they didn't know how information could travel that far. So they really wanted to know what school was like. And when I asked them questions about their school, what was one of the things that they liked about school, it shocked me that all forty-six of my students in a class, half the size in the class that I teach now, said homework. So that really shocked me. And when I told my students, they said, they said homework? And so education, they take a lot of pride in their education and they, their vision statement, the children hold to the vision statement because the community supports the school.
That's correct.
Any other questions?
How long are we going with there?
Four weeks.
Four weeks. Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions? I would like to say to you prior to leaving, please allow other teachers to come outside of the four walls so that they can also experience and travel abroad to have this same type of experience outside of the textbooks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, on presentations, we have Mr. David Stite, Lead EValuator with Advanced Ed. Mr. Stite? Did I skip her?
Can you skip one?
Well, I had a old, that's right. We'll get her next. I have her wrote down. Thank you.
Thank you. Department of State's Chair, I'm Mr. Charles Miller, Superintendent, Board of Education members. It is with great pleasure that I am here this evening to present and recognize the Brunswick County School System as one of the sixty-one school systems across North Carolina who have achieved recognition by Advanced Ed Sacks-Kasey District in district accreditation. The Board of Education and Superintendent Pruden are commended for the courage and foresight to make the decision to engage in systems model of accreditation. At Advanced Ed, we believe the system accreditation is like a huge fulcrum that can leverage improvement across the entire system. There is no question that the school and the classroom are at the heart of teaching and learning. System accreditation, however, has a power to nurture and support individual school improvement and at the same time unify school improvement and align it with overall system improvement goals so that the systems' goals are moving in one direction together, all on the same page. As part of this process, leaders and stakeholders of Brunswick County took stock of yourselves in relationship to the set of research-based quality standards, established a vision, assessed your current reality, implemented an improvement plan, monitored the progress, and evaluated results. You enhanced your best thinking with the insights and perspectives of an external review team. And as a result of the external review conducted on April fourth, one through four, two thousand twelve, Brunswick County Schools was recognized by the review team for your consistent district-wide school improvement plans aligned to the district's vision and purpose. The report noted how well Brunswick County incorporated the Advanced Ed Quality Assurance Review Process as a tool for district continuous improvement. The team also commended Brunswick County for the exceptional community support it receives and enhanced opportunities for students. The required actions that the school review team left with Brunswick County focused on building upon your strengths to develop, maintain, and publish a comprehensive data profile for the district that includes trends in student achievement while ensuring a systemic, systematic, and sustainable framework for effective collaboration at all levels of the school district. Brunswick County has much to be proud of, and it gives me great pleasure to present this plaque on behalf of Advanced Ed, the North Carolina State Office, to the Board of Education Chair, Mr. Miller, Superintendent, Dr. Pruden, in recognition of the significant achievement. How do you pronounce your last name?
Asine.
Asine, okay. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you very much for allowing us to come tonight to make these presentations. My name is Sheila O'San and I'm with the Assistance League of Greater Wilmington. We are one of a hundred and twenty chapters of Assistance League across the country. We have, the chapter here in Wilmington was started in two thousand and eight. We have, we're a nonprofit philanthropic organization. We raise money in the communities and we return it to the communities. We have, we service New Hanover, Brunswick, and Pender Counties. Our signature program is Operation School Bill. It's our national program. In Brunswick County, we service five of your schools and we provide school uniforms, backpacks, underwear, socks, a hygiene kit, and a book that each student gets to take home with them. We have a new program that was started this fall. It's called Links to Learning, and it is grants, awards to teachers to fund a program that is not available in the budget to, to perform. We have two awards to students in Brunswick, or teachers, excuse me, in Brunswick County tonight, and I would like to make those awards. I guess, should I have them come up or what do you want me to do?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. The first award is to Tana Perry. She is with Lincoln Elementary School. We have, present to her a check for eight hundred and eighty-three dollars. She works with three to five-year-olds with special needs. She works with three-to-five-year-olds, special needs, uh, students, and she has put together a program with the aquarium in, um, at Fort Fisher, and she is going to have an instructor from Fort Fisher come to her class six times, and then they are going to go on a field trip to the aquarium to see what the, uh, the naturalists has talked about, uh, in her class. And I'm happy to present this to you.
Thank you.
Um, the second award is to Hannah Styler. She is with Town Creek Elementary School. She also works with, uh, special needs students. She has, uh, ten students at this time, and the, uh, special needs students are, um, have, uh, can use an iPad. They seem to relate to an iPad a little better than regular instructions, and so we have a check for her for five hundred dollars to fund one iPad for her. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, and thank you for, for watching out for us and these teachers. It means a lot. Thank you. Hi, Ms. Swinski, Media Month in Review.
Mr. Chairman and Board Members, uh, we are unable to access the internet tonight to be able to bring that presentation to you, but I would like for you to know that, uh, two of the teachers we were going to feature are present tonight. Uh, both Amy Brinker of Belleville Elementary and Karen Babson of South Brunswick High School have been WWAY Teachers of the Week, uh, within the last month. Brunswick County is really, uh, striking it rich with WWAY, and I just would like for those two teachers to please stand and be recognized, and we will, uh, show the, uh, the motion pictures, uh, at next month's board meeting. Let us recognize you, please. Ms. Swinski had a, had an interesting program for you, and we're very disappointed that we're just not able to access it with the technology this evening. Mr. Chairman, I also like to recognize our principals who come to board meetings in support of their teachers who win awards and other kinds of recognition. And in the audience this evening, we have Dr. Vicky Snyder, Principal of Early College High School, uh, Ms. Walker Constantinesco of Town Creek Elementary, Ms. Kathy Owens, Principal of Bolivia Elementary, Ms. Retha Rusk, Principal at Lincoln, and also Dr. Rita Hargrove was here, Assistant Principal from Shiloh Middle, have amissed any of our building administrators. We appreciate you all coming out this evening. Thank you so much.
Okay, approval of the meeting agenda?
Mr. Chairman.
I'd like to add, under the action agenda, an item that's, we discussed yesterday with the county commissioners, I'd like to discuss the SRO funding for the remainder of this school year.
Okay, and that is item two.
Item two, and I'd like to also add as item three, have discussion about having Dr. Pruden look into the SRO, possible SRO agreement for the elementary schools in the next two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen school year.
Okay, Mr. Thompson?
Couple of things, Mr. Miller, um, let's see. I'd, I'd like to add the approval of a deed of transfer for a section of Waukesha School property to Brunswick County for the purpose of, uh, Waukesha Park expansion. Put that under the action agenda.
That's number four, sir.
That suits me. Uh, and the, um, next item I would just do, if you would please, under, um, discussion and announcements, I'd, I'd like to do a brief master plan update and, uh, encourage some participation in some upcoming activities.
That'd be number four under discussion, master plan update. Anybody else? School, inspection, sources, or? Okay. That is it. We'll go to approval of minutes. November sixteenth, board retreat. December fourth, uh, board development training. December fourth, regular meeting, and December eighteenth, meetings of the committees. Have a motion.
Motion to approve the minutes.
As, as reported.
Now, second.
Sorry, just, oh, right there. Just, let's, let's make a, do I have a motion to approve the agenda as of now?
Motion to approve the agenda with additions, yes.
Announce it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Now, approval of minutes.
Make a motion again. The one minute is presented.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, consent items. Uh, consent items. And now we're down to, um, action items. First on the list is the two thousand thirteen, fourteen school calendar.
Mr. Chairman, one of Dr. Metta's responsibilities is to chair the calendar committee, and she'll bring that information.
You've got two offices and one responsibility.
Okay. So, I got up here and got whistled at, too.
Yeah.
Um, anyway. Chairman Miller and Board Members, I'd like to present to you the information as to, um, how the calendar committee came to their recommendation that I'm bringing to you tonight. Are you looking for me, or am I doing? Okay. Um, just as a reminder, uh, the two thousand and twelve, there were calendar law changes that occurred in the legislature this last year. There is a minimum required instructional time, either a hundred and eighty-five days or one thousand twenty-five hours. Um, and there used to be, remember, a waiver for five, the five extra instructional days, which is either a hundred, the hundred and eighty-five, and that waiver is no longer allowed. We were under that waiver this year and last year. The first day, um, can be no earlier than the Monday closest to August twenty-sixth, and the last day, no later than the Friday closest to June eleventh. So, those are really, those are specific in the law, um, and what we have to follow. These are the items that have been in the calendar law and remained in the calendar law. The instructional days have to go over a nine-month period. There are ten annual vacation days or, um, where teachers can use annual leave or employees can use annual leave, excuse me. There are ten or fifteen teacher workdays, depending on whether you have a hundred and eighty-five student instructional days, then you'd only have ten teacher workdays. If you have a hundred and eighty-five, or a hundred and eighty teacher, uh, or student instructional days, there would be fifteen teacher workdays. So, a hundred and eighty-five student days, ten teacher workdays, a hundred and eighty student days, fifteen teacher workdays.
Now, when you say workdays, are you saying that's fifteen, that they'll be able to stay in their class and spend time in their class, or is this things are going to get poor?
It could be for lots of different things. It's the teacher, it's designated as a teacher workday. It's a day that teachers have, they can either come to work, or they take annual leave, or it's requi- it could be a required teacher workday that the district has said they must come to work or take sick leave, basically.
No, that would be in the classroom.
No, no. Cause some of them are for, um, parent conference days, open house days, staff development days, those types of activities. So, we have those, um, teacher workdays. Two of the teacher workdays in the law must be non-required, so that allows, those days cannot be designated for us to say teachers have to come to work. Teachers are allowed to use their annual vacation days, those ten up at the top. They can use those annual leave or annual vacation days on those workdays. Ten or eleven legal holidays, it depends on where Christmas falls as to whether there's ten or eleven. Um, and if there are eleven legal holidays, then the teacher workdays are reduced by one. No school can happen on Sunday. Veteran Day has to be a holiday, and there's two hundred and fifteen total days between the student days and these days listed above there. Okay? So, what did the calendar committee do? Um, well, first of all, we asked for representatives from the school by the principals. They need to be, have a parent and a staff member. Um, this pers- or these representatives would return back to the school and ask for feedback or suggestions on the drafts that we had. At the first meeting on December third, we had three draft calendars that were generated. One was a hundred and eighty days, one was a hundred and eighty-five days, and one was actually a hundred and eighty-two days. Um, and as the hundred and eighty-two and the hundred and eighty-five are acceptable as long as you can ensure you have one thousand twenty-five hours of instructional time. And so, the members went back with those three calendars to their schools and received feedback. We also put a survey online on our website, sent out a connected call telling people that we wanted their feedback, collected that information, and then reconvened on December tenth. The committee decided from their feedback and from the online survey feedback that the hundred and eighty-five day was one that they, they wanted to eliminate, so we were down to the two drafts, a hundred and eighty days and a hundred and eighty-two days. We again made some adjustments to those two drafts, and the members went back and received more feedback, and we did a survey again on our website, also making connected calls asking for feedback. These are our survey results. The first one obviously was from the first, all three drafts were submitted for, um, feedback. And then the second one, you can see we had three hundred and sixty-seven respondents. Um, the majority were staff, um, and the majority of the votes were for the hundred and eighty days. And we also asked for each school to tell us when they went back to their school, what calendar did they prefer at their school, and all of the schools submitted back Draft Two, which was the hundred and eighty days. So, you have in front of you, and it's on the, um, the actual, um, agenda, the Draft Two calendar, which is a hundred and eighty days, that I also, um, presented at committee on December eighteenth, um, and that is the recommendation of the committee and what we're asking for the board to approve. We do not have an early college calendar yet, but we will bring one back to you for next year once BCC has an approved calendar as well.
When do you expect them to have one?
Early college, I believe?
Um, I don't know. Sorry. Hopefully in the next month, I would hope, but I don't know that for sure. Are there questions about the calendar or our process?
Your turn, Mr.?
A move that we accept the two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen traditional school calendar Draft Two.
Second, new discussion? All in favor? Thank you, Dr. Metta.
Dr. Metta, thank you for the inclusive manner in which you involve schools, teachers, the community, uh, all the opportunities for input, uh, that we get a very strong document because of that process. Thank you.
Chairman and Board, I believe this is the earliest we've ever approved a calendar, isn't it? Is it not?
It's pretty close, yeah.
Pretty close.
From the first time I've understood, I believe in all the days and all... I finally understand it all.
Okay, uh, next on the agenda is school security, SROs. Mr. Thorson, I'll turn the, turn it over to you.
Mr. Chairman, yesterday, we, four of the board members met with four of the county commissioners and with Dr. Pruden and the county staff, and we discussed having, at least for the remainder of this school year, having SROs at the nine elementary schools. And, um, I think First Sergeant Todd Corning is here. Would you like to address some of the things we discussed yesterday, Deputy Corning? If that's okay, Board, Mr. Chairman, Mr.?
Yes.
And maybe Dr. Pruden, you may want to summarize some, too. And of course, Sheriff Ingram was with us, too, yesterday.
Okay. Thank you. I was just, uh, wanting to come and speak to, uh, board members tonight and staff and, uh, those folks in attendance. After hearing the presentations yesterday, um, about the possibility of officers at the elementary schools, uh, I've been with the sheriff's office, uh, fifteen years this year, and I've served seven of those years, a little over seven of those years, as a resource officer at our elementary schools, teaching the DARE program. And we still teach that program now at our elementary schools using an officer, one officer that fluctuates throughout the school year to each one of the elementary schools to, um, present this program. But I just want to listen to your discussion yesterday. I thought I might could help out a little bit, just to let you know that if we, uh, if you do choose to put officers at the schools, the, the deputy there will not just be an officer, they'll be, uh, more than that, because an officer serving certainly is a comfort and, you know, as far as protection level and a deterrent for crime and things to happen, but elementary school officers can be more than that because they will have the ability to be in the classrooms with the students. The DARE program is not only a fifth-grade level program that we teach now, but it also expands all the way down to kindergarten. So, there are, there are visitation programs where that DARE officer, we get an officer in each elementary school, we could certify each one of those officers to be DARE officers, or we would have nine DARE officers versus the one that we have now, and that officer could take that school year to, um, present these programs to our fifth-grade level students, but also tier down into the kindergarten through the fourth grade level, and we call those, uh, visitation lessons. And these are safety lessons. It teaches the kids about the dangers of anything from neighborhood, uh, you know, just everyday things about cross balls, crossing out into the streets, safety aspects of neighborhoods, running into stranger danger. It also teaches them about stress, how to deal with stress, decision-making skills, and, and the list just goes on, but I just thought I could, if I could, just take a minute of your time tonight to express that to you, that they won't just be an officer in the school, but they will be a good role model, they'll be a good, uh, friend to the students. There's an open door policy that DARE officers, um, express to the kids through the classroom to let them know that we are their friends. They see us as a friend, um, whereas a lot of times in their older days, or they see officers more as enforcers. They see us having to go in and, and break up disputes at homes and different things. In my experience, this is a DARE office for those years, um, and, and working with the kids, um, it gives them that level, um, at a young age versus middle and high school when their minds, you know, they're already making their decisions more, and they're, they're in that phase in the middle schools and the high schools where they're already choosing the road to travel and meeting friends. At the young level, in the elementary schools, for an officer to be there on a daily basis, I think would make a huge impact and an imprint that I don't think you could buy anywhere. So, I just thought I would just come and, uh, appreciate you letting me, um, just relay this information to you if you have any questions.
For those of you that weren't here, there yesterday, um, Sheriff Ingram spoke briefly about that also, but like, like Todd said, it's, it's could be a, a whole buying concept with us, with the sheriff's office, uh, with the county commissioners, with the faculties at each school. It's, it, it's gonna be a big team, and, and we're not, like you said, we're not just gonna be there walking around for security purposes. Um, you're gonna have a car parked out front, they're gonna be teaching in classes, they're gonna be mentoring kids, and, and, you know, Sheriff Ingram, I think, yesterday said it perfectly, how do, how do you say that, that these kids are any less important than our middle and our high school kids, where we already have SROs?
Right.
Uh, we have issues a lot of times at our elementary schools now, and in my twenty-five years' experience, we've had them ever since I've been in law enforcement, and our principal shaking her head out there now, cause she knows exactly what I'm getting to say. Um, you know, we have custody issues, um, we have, uh, had a parent, uh, last year that threatened to bring a, a gun to school to, to solve this custody issue. We had to have officers waiting that next morning for, for his arrival. Um, and, and not, not everybody agrees with, and, you know, this concept of putting them in the elementary schools, but, you know, we, we did a, a kind of a survey today and asked for comments, and I've got a folder full of comments. There's only two negatives out of probably several hundred that the sheriff received today on his Facebook in support of this. Editorials in the Sunday Star News, the Beacon, um, I just don't want anybody to think it's a knee-jerk reaction, and, you know, we've heard comments on, well, why can't you use private security? Well, first of all, private security, nothing against that profession at all. Uh, that's, that's their profession, but private security cannot investigate crimes. Private security is not, um, trained like our guys are. They don't have the firepower that we have, and, uh, you know, if you're going to do it, you've got to be able to, to do the things and teach the lessons and, and different things that we're going to be doing. Uh, we're gonna work closely with operations on, on security issues. We, we did assessments last week, uh, of all of our elementary schools, and, um, those were in the books provided yesterday. They're not serious security issues, but they're little things, maybe a bush needs to be cut, or, or a lock needs to be changed, or something like that. A gate needs to be shut. Uh, so, you know, if we get these officers in these schools, we're going to be so proactive on things like that, but also, um, very proactive with our, our students. And, you know, if we can reach these kids at a young age, I think it's gonna go a long, long ways. I really do. But, um, I, I'll be glad to answer any questions. I'm gonna, uh, recuse myself from any vote on this matter, but, uh, I, I can answer any questions that you may have also.
Well, I got a question, Mr. Chairman, that we talked about yesterday. Well, I got a question, Mr. Chairman, that we talked about yesterday. Right now we're paying the S R Os at the elementary schools overtime. Uh, and, and what we want to do is try to be consistent and have that same S R O at the school, but that's not a possib- that's not possible for the remainder of this year. Are, are we gonna try to do what we can to have the same officer? Is that, is that gonna be possible?
It, it'd probably take us anywhere from two to three weeks to get, um, nine new officers in place, maybe as long as a month. Um, so, um, for the next few weeks, it would be different officers. We've tried to keep the same ones there as much as we can, with their schedule allowing. But, um, probably within a month, we could have permanent placement there in those schools.
Well, it's a shame we have to do this regardless because of what happened in Connecticut and other places where they had this violence, but, um, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we continue to fund the S R Os for the nine elementary schools for the remainder of this school year. Count it here.
Motion second.
Second.
New discussion? All in favor?
Chairman, Dr. Pruden.
Well, I, I would like to just add a comment. When we think about, uh, the mass killings that have happened in our country in recent years, we can all think quickly of Columbine High School and Virginia Tech and more recently Newtown. But I went online today and I looked up the number of school shootings in the United States since Columbine. And I was stunned, page after page after page, listing schools and communities where one or two or three people had been killed. And so we, we deceive ourselves just a little bit if we think mathematically the odds of it happening in our community are very small. It happens more than we realize in our great big country. And at Newtown Elementary, they had just installed a state-of-the-art electronic security system. Nobody could enter the school with that being identified outside and buzzed in. And what did the killer do but blow away the door and enter? What they did not have in Newtown was a trained armed responder. And had they had that, I don't believe there would have been twenty-seven lives lost and twenty young children. The board has given great consideration to alternatives. Our community has volunteered. We've heard from retirees, uh, retired military, retired police officers, uh, people who wanna come and be extra sets of eyes and ears on campus. Uh, the board has considered private officers. Uh, I have worked in the past with all of those, um, classifications of, of persons. And I just will say that to protect our children, there is no, uh, stronger force available than, uh, an officer trained by the sheriff's department, equipped by the sheriff's department, and held accountable and provided ongoing training by the sheriff's department. That provides the maximum level of safety for our staff and our students. And, uh, it, it is a shame, uh, that we have to bear that expense. But I think if you were to ask the community of Newtown what they would have paid for there to have been only nineteen children killed rather than twenty, they couldn't give you a number. And it is a risk that this community does not want to take. The response to having S R Os in our elementary schools has been overwhelmingly positive since, uh, that first Monday after the tragedy, overwhelmingly positive. I appreciate the board. Uh, we, we wanna take, uh, for the rest of this year, my, my recommendation is that we pay for the, uh, police presence in our schools with fund balance. And then, um, the board could instruct the superintendent to include a proposal in next year's budget for, uh, the, the year.
Mr. Chairman, uh, board members. Mr. Chairman has, has asked that I take the vote on this because he's gonna recuse himself on the vote with his affiliation with the sheriff's department. But, uh, Dr. Pruden, I think that needs to be in a separate motion if we're gonna go with the two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen. What the motion is now is for this remainder of this calendar year at the nine elementary schools. And Mr. Thompson?
Noted that Dr. Pruden added the detail that it would be paid for from our fund balance.
About, um, just under two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Um, let me revise that. Under two, two hundred and fifteen.
Just like this right here, approximately two hundred and forty-five.
Two forty-five is a revised figure. Two forty-five, eight thirty-eight, just under a quarter of a million dollars for this year. And we have, uh, we are, we should keep in our fund balance two months' expenses. And we have just that amount over two months' expenses. So yes, we can afford it, fortunately.
Ms. Kay Hill, you have any comments about that?
No, sir. I, I was just thinking of the amount, if I could have a budget amendment.
Is your budget amendment the same as what Dr. Pruden had commented, a little less than two hundred and fifty thousand?
Two hundred and forty-five thousand, eight hundred and thirty-eight.
Uh, Mr. Attorney, do we need to put that in or just let it be taken out of, uh, our funds and our fund balance? Okay, so we don't need to put the number in there. Okay. Any other questions? All those in favor remaining the S R Os at the elementary schools for the remainder of this year signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
Okay, um, number three is the S R O funding for two thousand thirteen, thank you Todd, two thousand thirteen, fourteen school year. And I, I might ask Ms., and I'm gonna put her on the spot if she don't mind, but Ms. Owens, and, and Ms. C, if you have any comments that you may like to make, um, I mean, y'all, y'all been dealing with this for a few weeks now and could you come up and tell us how you feel about it? I just wanna hear your side.
I think, I want to say how much that we appreciate at Bolivia Elementary School, having the presence of an officer. Um, the, the community perception is that it's a very safe school. I've only had two parents come to me and ask questions about what else we are doing and cer- certain safety issues. Um, I think the real test for us that particular week was we had our holiday show and our P T A meeting. And every chair was full. There was not a place in the cafeteria. So, um, we've had very positive comments from parents. Um, the resource officers have been great with the kids. In fact, I had a little kindergartner come to me and say, can we keep him? You know, he plays well with him on the playground. Um, they've been very cooperative. I've felt a lot better because that's something that rattled us all to the bone. Um, and it kept me from feeling like I had to run around the campus all day long checking doors and, and checking things. So it's been a great comfort to me, but the teachers have appreciated it. Uh, students are, are used to seeing the officers. They wanna talk to them. They wanna have conversations with them. Um, and I love the idea of someone being there full-time to, uh, do the DARE program and also at all the other programs that we've had over the years, the gun safety, the stranger. And if we had someone there full-time, they could continuously do classroom education for the whole school. So thank you so much. I appreciate it. And I know the school well and the teachers well and my parents.
Did you tell you was playing on the playground?
Yes. That's okay, right?
You're on a swing or anything?
I think they were playing tag, but he had them all. Thank you.
Did Ms. Tammy Creek want to say?
Ms. C, did you want to say?
We just appreciated it. Um, the kids love having him. He's been really, um, good with parents. Um, gets there at seven and those parents that, you know, drop children off early and he's been able to field those questions and handle things like he's been a part of our staff the whole time. We've been fortunate to have the same one pretty much the entire time and he is just, it's like he's been with us since we opened. So we appreciate having him.
And, and that's been very important because they're gonna become a part of your staff i- if the board sees fit and they're not, they're gonna be teaching the staff, uh, things too. So it's not gonna be just for the students, but it's also gonna be some training for the staff as well.
And he's, he's been really good about pointing out things and, you know, just with our after-school partner, you know, who had all the security, things that, you know, I think about during the school day, but, you know, we've got twenty kids that stay after school. What do we do about those children as well? And we've got parks and rec coming in that we've gotta figure out. So it's brought to my attention some things that I didn't typically think about.
Now, it is a little complicated to, to them, but, um, we've had several, probably five or six of our, six of our guys that, that have been, or veteran officers, that I never in my life thought would want to work in an elementary school. And they are requesting, they have put in letters of request already to go to these elementary schools. You must be feeding them or something. Something's going on, but, uh,
They like those kids.
They have fell in love with these children.
Yeah, and I think, you know, that it's a good fit. And like I said, we've had one that has just really, just
I'd never thought that.
Um, but he's just like, he's just following him with the staff, like he's been there, you know, the three years we've been open. And that's important.
Board members, uh, in reference to the next
Calendar year, there is talk at the federal and state level among legislators, uh, of some funding to support school resource officers nationwide or statewide. But that, of course, is preliminary at this point and we would not be wise to count on that kind of assistance even if we hope for it. But something like that may come. In the meantime, I would recommend and request that the board instruct the superintendent and his staff to, uh, investigate the cost of having, uh, the S R Os in elementary schools for the full year and to include that as a proposal in the budget proposal to bring for the board's consideration later this spring.
Let me add one more thing to that. Um, you know, if we go out and hire nine officers, we can't invest in nine officers just for six months. That's a huge cost to, to the county. And, um, so I, I would ask, um, that y'all would support that because, um, I mean, you just can't hire them for, for six months and at the end of six months, you got nine cars, you got nine of everything. So I just ask you to consider that, please.
So Dr. Pruden, your, your recommendation is that we have you and administrators looking to fund and to place S R Os at the nine elementary schools for the two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen school year?
Yes, sir.
That is to look into the possible funding and how we will fund it. And one of the concerns that Mr. Miller and myself brought up, uh, yesterday was that we hope that it will not take away from instruction in classrooms. And that's something that you all need to look at.
Yes, sir. We'll, we'll minimize that to the extent we can. We are a system of teachers. Eighty percent of our budget is salaries and benefits for classroom teachers. And it's difficult to say to you that we could find a half million dollars, uh, in the budget, uh, without it impacting the classroom. We would minimize that and to the extent that we can, uh, include state or federal support, we will. But I think the community would, would say to you with a resounding voice, um, if the choice is between, um, having, uh, nine fewer teachers in Brunswick County Schools out of eight hundred or, uh, keeping our S R Os in the elementary schools, it, it's a trade-off well worth.
You're not talking about, you're not talking about bodies, you're talking about positions?
Positions. We always have folks who retire each year and we have folks who move from our community for one reason or another. And, uh, we would not, uh, there is no employee whose position would be threatened, but we could reduce by that number, uh, through attrition without impacting, uh, anybody's, uh, financial standing.
But again, we're gonna be looking for grants or any kind of funds that, that are available through the state or federal government that we can place these.
I'm just not comfortable promising that we can do it with no impact on the classroom, but we would bring a proposal to you with the minimum impact on the classroom that we can.
So tonight's vote is just for you all to research it and bring it back to us about the cost?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Do I have a motion, Mr. Miller's, that gonna not take action on this, so? I have a motion from a board member to approve S R Os for the nine elementary schools for the two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen, pending, and a, a funding recommendation by the administration. Do I have a second?
You just changed the motion, I think, didn't you?
No, it's a new motion.
Yeah. Well, um, the recommendation was to direct staff and your motion is now
To, to direct the staff to bring funding agreement back to, for us to consider funding the S R Os for the two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen school year.
Good.
I have a motion by Ms. Bass and a second by Ms. Cook.
I submerge them, but it doesn't matter.
Any other discussion?
Yes, I, we had, uh, I think one of the best meetings I have ever, uh, attended with the county commissioners yesterday. There were four of the county commissioners there, four of the, uh, school board members. And they were, uh, very much in agreement with this. And to the point that, uh, they will look at their funds too, if it's necessary. And, uh, so I, I felt very good about that, that we, we could, might have some help from them. Um, and if, of course, if we don't, we're looking at the part if we don't, but it looks like that everybody's on board with this and I just wanted to say that.
Any other comments? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye? Any opposed? Motion carried.
Okay, um, number four, Waukesha Mall deed, the park deed.
Mr. Chairman, I, the, uh, county parks and rec department has been working, I guess, for some time, developing a conceptual master plan. Uh, as an operations committee, we have, um, to, to see the, uh, master plan in its development and to understand that, uh, the school system may have a role to play because the master plan requires, uh, some use of, um, Waukesha Mall school property.
The county commissioners have adopted this master plan and it is my hope that this board will, uh, support that effort.
On the part of the commissioners by, uh, agreeing to the motion to, uh, uh, provide the necessary portion of the Waukesha Mall school property that we will not be using for educational purposes for the purpose of expansion of the park. And I do have a motion that I'd like to, um, to make if it's appropriate. I'd like to move that the Board of Education declare, uh, as surplus and unnecessary for school purposes, uh, approximately five and a half acres of board property pursuant to General Statute Section one fifteen C five eighteen. Said property is more particularly described in Book eighty-one at page four forty-eight Brunswick County Registry. And as you can see, this was written by our attorney. Further, that the board is authorized to convey said property to Brunswick County. Accordingly, the board chair and superintendent are authorized to execute the required documents facilitating conveyance of the above referenced property. And I'll provide this to you for the formal motion.
Mr. Thompson, that was real sad.
It's written by our attorney.
I might just second that.
So I have a motion by Mr. Thompson and a second by Ms. Cook. Any discussion? Mr. Miley, you have anything you wanna chime in on there? Good. Okay.
Again, it brings back the Relationship we have with our county commissioners, the trust that we have.
And I do have a copy of the
Deed, if anyone is interested, the special warranty deed that would be used.
That's actually the, uh,
That's the original deed. Yes.
You wanna pass that on down?
It'll definitely be you. Let's get it back in the right hands.
We need some signatures on this.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Uh-huh.
All opposed?
I guess it's
Right, if action, Dr. Pruden?
Yes, sir.
Okay, discussion announced by the superintendent and board members. Uh, January committee meetings, January the twenty-second. Uh, operations will be at nine, safe schools at ten, curriculum eleven, policy at two.
Uh, operations will be at nine, safe schools at ten, curriculum at eleven, policy at two, HR at three, and finance at four. Is everybody okay with those? School visits, um, January the seventeenth?
Is that, you have the correct one?
That is the correct one, okay. January the se- yeah, 'cause I'll be in Raleigh on the sixteenth at the board training, and so I'll be back for that. So, uh, early college, and, uh, Lee Williamson, Cedar Road, VCA. All right, uh, county PAC meeting, January the twenty-second at Virginia Williamson. And...
That's a long day.
It is. And, uh, Mr. Thompson, I'll let you handle number four, the master plan update.
Well, as the board does... We have, um, a contract with KBR to assist us in our, uh, facilities plan update. And, uh, as a part of that, we have a facilities task force that is made up of both staff, uh, administrators, and, uh, the general public. Um, KBR has been working, uh, since, I guess, August, sometime in that timeframe. Uh, and primarily in November and December, uh, they have met with, uh, many individuals in the community. Uh, and- and most of you were interviewed, I think, during that time. There's been a substantial amount of, um, direct contact with individuals and, you know, trying to assess what- what people's thoughts are about the schools and our facilities. I think there were two hundred and seventy-five interviews that took place. So, KBR is now in the, I guess, the throes of completing the, um, the gathering of information. And, uh, the next step, um, let's see, I- I think we- we have a facilities task force meeting on the fourteenth at eight-thirty. And, uh, I, the, all the board members are always welcome to attend, but we'd like to make sure that word gets out to all our facilities task force members that, um, that meeting will take place and their input is considered very valuable.
When was that meeting?
January fourteenth at eight-thirty.
Where?
Uh, in the conference room of Sandford Building, boardroom, yeah. Okay, and there's, um, three scheduled focus group meetings coming up. Uh, and, Mr. Miley, you may need to help me with the focus groups. Is that open to the general public? So, we want to encourage, in fact, the general public to participate in each of these three focus group opportunities. The first one is January the twenty-second at six-thirty PM, and I think that would conflict with, uh, our PAC meeting. But that's okay. Uh, we- we have a lot of people to go around. We'll hopefully have some people to take up the slack for that evening.
Where is it going to be?
That would be at North Brunswick, at the high school, North Brunswick High School. And I- I'll certainly, uh, try to spread the word, but i- it's important that we all try to encourage as much participation as we can because this is preparing a, I hesitate to use it, but I'll say it, a blueprint for, uh, our future with our facilities. And it's, um, it will determine a- a great deal. We- we, and our, you mentioned earlier, our meeting with, uh, the commissioners as a liaison committee yesterday. We- we informed them that we have a lot of unfunded needs at this point, uh, approximately forty million dollars of, uh, projects that we could do if we had the money for. But, uh, we also have ongoing maintenance and, uh, other needs in our facilities to make sure we're offering the best facilities to carry out our education mission. So, um, it's all very important stuff to make sure that we're providing the best facilities for our students. Uh, the third meeting, well, the- the second meeting is January the twenty-third, the following evening at six-thirty at South Brunswick High School. So, Mr. Miller, you have a- a second opportunity there. And our third meeting is on the twenty-fourth, the Thursday of next week, at, um, West Brunswick High School. Or the January twenty-fourth at six-thirty at West Brunswick. So, hopefully, Mr. Thorson, you'll lead a large contingency of, uh, folks and- and Ms. Cook as well.
Okay.
So, do all that you can to promote these meetings because, um, it, there's a- a lot at stake.
So, the same thing that we discussed at each meeting?
Yeah, there's, it's, uh, yeah, we wanna give as many people an opportunity to contribute to the report, the facilities task force report as possible.
Podium? I'm not sure how they'll deal with it.
The, uh, the format that we've discussed is to take the information that they have thus far gathered from all of their interviews and- and, uh, discussion sessions and vet them basically, uh, with the public at those three meetings. Uh, so, the content may vary a little bit, but I think that basically, uh, depending on regional needs, uh, but, you know, pretty much the same meeting in three different locations for the convenience of the people. And, uh, we'd like to encourage anybody to attend as many times as they want, you know, vote often. And, uh, participate, uh, at- at those meetings to give our consultants the direction that the community would like to see us go in. And then they'll be taking that information and bringing it to the Board of Education to, uh, discuss where we go from here.
Mr. Miley, well, I've got you. Um, the target completion date for the facilities plan update is April?
We, yes, uh, we- we were going to, uh, we- we delayed, uh, the, about a month because of the holiday, uh, intrusion there. And, uh, we expect that, uh, probably the, uh, March or April, uh, operations committee would be when we're going to, uh, present, uh, the final results.
Okay. So, that's my announcement, Mr. Chairman.
Anybody else? I would like to say one thing, um, don't know how many of you saw the news, um, the last Friday night, North Brunswick, at North Brunswick High School. I was extremely embarrassed by what happened at, uh, North Brunswick. And, um, let me say this, it was, it had absolutely nothing to do with our teams, uh, the White team or North Brunswick. They acted very professionally. Um, the kids didn't get out of hand, it was, it was from the spectators. And, uh, you know, it's an embarrassment to- to this board and to North Brunswick High School especially for- for grown-ups to act the way they did. And, uh, we're not gonna tolerate it. So, if we have those outbursts and there's, uh, calls for arrests, we'll arrest them, and then we'll ban them from the school property. So, you know, they're there for sport in a minute. Act like adults and enjoy the game. You know, holler, cheer, do, you know, do what you need to do. But, you know, when you start throwing things and, you know, having to evacuate the gym, I've never in my life heard that. John Randleman on TV Three says it's the first thing that he can remember. He's been covering sports forever. So, um, I- I actually called the superintendent of White and apologized to them, but, um, just when it's the parents, it's, there's something wrong there. So, um, that's all I had to say about that. But I could go on and on forever about it, but it just, it just burns me up when you got grown-ups acting that way. Okay, anything else, uh, closed session, motion to go into closed session?
So, I move.
Second? Stack, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's take about five minutes.